Now call this regular council meeting to order. Welcome everyone who's come out for the meeting tonight and also those who'll be viewing the meeting on G10 television. To begin with, we're going to start with our pledge of allegiance led by council member Cindy Edwards, followed by the invocation by our city attorney. Please rise.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our heavenly Father is always repulsive to give you thanks, to give you thanks for this day that you've blessed each of us with, for the blessings and benefits that you bless our city with, and also bless each of us individually. We pray this evening for unity. We pray that you would break down the barriers that divide us, race, politics, social issues, that you would draw us together in understanding that the items that make us stronger are the items we need to be worrying about and focusing on, keeping our liberties, and serving you, and serving our neighbor and fellow man. Heal us individually, and heal us as a community and a nation. We especially give thanks for those who are serving us tonight on the front lines, in our military, for their anxious families. Protect and be with them. And as always, give your guidance and your direction to our mayor and to our council. All this we ask in your holy name. Amen.
Counsel, now entertain a motion to adopt the agenda for tonight's meeting.
Someone?
Sir? We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the agenda? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed. Next, we have our first section of public comment for the evening. I have one person that has signed up, Ms. Beth Edwards. If you will come to the podium up on the, over on the right over here. Well, we kind of bumped you.
You're going to talk to us about pickleball, is that right?
Timer's starting. I just wondered if it's on your radar to have a dedicated pickleball court anywhere or a center? I know there's a track of land that you're asking about, suggestions, and we have a strong pickleball community, but right now we have to share it at the Commons. And then Jack came out with the volleyball and basketball, and the summer camps really affect us. So, we were going to have a bunch of people come and talk about some things that are going on, but we're going to straighten, you know, talk with the rec center about those, hopefully come to a resolution. But is there an idea of having a pickleball center? Because it's the fastest growing sport, you have a lot of senior citizens, it's...
I think we're in the process of conducting a study right now as far as recreational needs are concerned, and I'm sure that that's going to be figured into the conversation. Maybe Mr. Ray can give you more information if you want to contact him, but right now that's the plan, to move forward. Now, you know, what goes on there is going to be, you know, probably, you know, based on demand through a survey.
And also, like, I know there's the Y, that new building that used to be the church, and it's going to be the YMCA. Do you have anything to do with that, or? I didn't know if they put some courts in there.
That's the YMCA, ma'am. We did a partnership agreement on that, but that's, what they do is what they do.
Right.
But thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Yeah, oh, definitely. It's a fun sport. I encourage you all to come out and try it sometime. But we just need a dedicated place to play that we can, because I said, it goes from all ages. We have a college student playing with us now that's home for college, you know, for the summer, and 80-year-olds playing and 60s.
Looks like a lot of fun.
It is. Thank you.
Actually, one of the sports shows channels had pickleballs, doubles, the other day televised, so.
Right, it's the fastest growing sport. It's going to be some professional teams, too, if they're looking at that.
I actually saw a news, on the news the other day was some individual, I can't remember what area it was in jurisdiction-wise, but he had bought out one of the empty box stores and actually opened up a pickleball courts. Of course, you had to pay admission and all that, but...
Do, I mean, yeah, there'd be, we'd pay if it's worth it. And, yeah, I know a lot of malls are closing down, and they're making pickleball centers now, too. But anyway, it's all...
Thank you, thank you for coming.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right, so now we're going to go to the adoption of the minutes and consent items. The minutes are from the June 20th, 2023, regular meeting and the June 30th, 2023 special meeting. And you have six consent items.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. We'll move on down to public hearings. We have item number seven, and this is a quasi-judicial special use permit in Site 3 Site Plan for Biagio's properties at 622 Court Street. And at this time, I'll recess the regular council meeting and open up the public hearing on this matter. And Ryan, I'll swear you, you swear that you represent, you're about to give us the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, self-help guy.
I do. Thank you, Mayor. City Council, Gen item seven is a request from Biagio's LLC, I'm sorry, Biagio Properties LLC for a special use permit and site plan, Type 3 site plan for a 6,321 square foot bar, nightclub, and tavern. The building's existing, it's at the, you know, corner right diagonal from the courthouse in downtown Jacksonville. The building's currently set up where there's five units, basically a common area and then four units. The special use permit, if approved by city council, would give them the ability to use all or part of that building for the intended use of a bar, tavern, and nightclub. The aerial before you shows where it is located, the corner of Old Bridge and Court Street, and the property at the location as well as everywhere in the vicinity is downtown business. And per the site plan that's shown in the exhibit, it pretty much, the building consumes 100% of the property. There's very little, just the concrete walk in the front that's not on the property. So, as with downtown, parking is not a requirement, and they wouldn't have anywhere to put it anyhow if they wanted to provide some. The uses in downtown depend on the public parking that's in the area, and we do have public parking, a city-owned lot here to the rear. Last week, the planning board reviewed this request, and as you'll find on page one, the city staff and the planning advisory board recommend that council approve the special use permit and Type 3 site plan based on finding effects A through G being found in the affirmative, as the proposed request creates a new use type in the downtown and consists in promoting new development in the downtown area. And the planning board minutes should be attached if you have any questions, although it was pretty straightforward. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have. I know that Charles Riggs and Martin in Lori Aragona are here representing Biagio's LLC, and I believe they want to present some evidence as well, since this is a quasi-judicial hearing. Be happy to answer any questions that the mayor and council may have.
Counsel, any questions of Mr. King on this item?
None.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
And I have Mr. Martin here, Aragona Jr. If you would please be sworn, since it is, since it is quasi-judicial, I swear you in, Mark. You swear the evidence you're about to give us, the truth, the whole truth and nothing but truth, self-help guy?
I do.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and city council and city staff. Thank you so much for having us here tonight and having the public hearing tonight. I just wanted to briefly speak about the building. My wife Lori and I bought it over 10 years ago, and we just think it's a beautiful building. This is the original picture of it in 1901. It was the first brick building built on Court Street in 1901. All buildings prior to that were wood structures, so it has a very unique history. That's actually Mr. and Mrs. Hinton right there on the right and their young daughter. They opened up the Hinton and Coons General Merchandise Store there. So, we always love looking at this picture right here. The next picture is when we bought it about 15 years ago. I think this is from 2008. And Lori and our two boys are standing out in front of it. That's kind of what the front facade looked like when we bought it. We have two units there. The original structure was a standalone building that you just saw, and in about five or 10 years after the 1901 construction, the structure to the right was built. So, we own, the whole 622 Court Street building encompasses both those units that were long structures that went all the way back to the rear city parking lot. It's an Italianate facade there that we're proud of, because we named it after my great-grandfather, who was actually an Italian immigrant, so we love the Italianate facade there. This was another side view of the picture of the building that prior to our major renovation in 2008. We actually didn't start the renovation for a number of years. We weren't sure what we wanted to do with it. So, we bought it in 2008, and for several years, we were debating different ideas. But we finally started construction 10 years ago, and you could see it required a lot of demolition. We gutted out the two, right in the center of the two units to create what we call our new piazza room. Let me go back to that. Well, I don't, oh, yeah. So, we gutted out the center of both, of the entire complex to create our new piazza room, which is the common area in the center. So, we created two units on the front on Court Street and two units on the back, on the back parking lot side. So, as Ryan stated, we have four units with the center common area that we call the piazza room, which in Italian stands for like town square, a courtyard, meeting area in Italian. And during our renovation, we actually uncovered a unique mural from 1901, because as that first picture showed, the corner unit was a standalone building, and this was on the outside of the wall, which is now on the interior of Unit 200. And it is promoting the RP Hinton General Merchandise Store, and they're advertising some sort of compound, but we can't make out all the full name, because the new block wall that was built like in 1910 or thereabouts is kind of covering some of the wording, but we always ask people if they could help us decipher what type of compound it is. But we think it's some sort of croup salv or something like that. But this was a unique find, because there were layers upon layers that we removed during the renovation that were on top of the original brick walls from 1901. So, it was just a unique renovation process. This is the new piazza we created in the center, all new steel construction with a skylight high, with high ceilings. This is our, the front facade after the renovation. We're proud to say we were, we received a City of Jacksonville award in years past for beautification, and we appreciate the city council awarding us that. This is looking into Unit 100 there. So, as you're standing in the piazza room, you can look into Unit 100. And Unit 100 is a kitchen unit. There's a full kitchen in there, and it will always be a kitchen unit. And we started that, Lori and I started that nine years ago. We opened up Biagio's. We now call the whole building the Biagio's Building. So, we will always have a restaurant entity in Unit 100, and that's also the piazza room as you could, to the right there, you could look up into the skylight. Lori just actually completed an updated renovation on the interior, and that's how it looks right now today. The picture on the left is looking into Unit 300. That's, that unit goes to the back rear city public parking lot. And Unit 400 to the right there is actually our construction office. Marlo Construction, Lori and I have our construction office, and we work in there on a daily basis. This is Unit 200, looking into Unit 200, where we planned, hopefully, to have the Clove Hitch Beer Company with us in there shortly. And it's a beautiful unit, so you're standing into the piazza, looking into Unit 200, and you could see Court Street there in the distance through the glass. This is kind of, I know when you do a special use permit, of course, it runs with the property. So, I know we're not promoting any particular unit or a particular business in a particular unit at the Biagio's Building. The special use permit runs with the entire property, as Brian stated. But we just wanted to give you a general idea of, the special use permit would give us flexibility to have an entity like the Clove Hitch Beer Company in here, in Unit 200, and that's hopefully what we intend to have here soon. And this is kind of some design concepts they have for Unit 200, a very nice upscale beer and wine company. And this is the mural. We've continued to preserve it and save it in Unit 200 where Clove Hitch will be located. We've actually framed it with some original wood from the demolition and renovation of the building that we saved. So, that's original wood from 1901 that we picture-framed the mural with in Unit 200. And that's it. Thank you for your time, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. If not, thank you for your consideration. I do have Haley Leo with us here. She's part owner with her husband of the Clove Hitch, and she could speak or answer any questions if you have any of her as well. But if not, thank you for your time and consideration.
And counsel, any questions of Mr. Aragona? You and Lori are both to be committed on the efforts that you've made to help regenerate growth in downtown Jacksonville. I want to make that, put that on the record.
Well, thank you so much, Mayor. I appreciate that. Lori and I have, we live downtown with our two boys. Well, actually, our oldest boy has moved on. He didn't want to live with us anymore. He's grown and an adult now. But we live downtown, and he comes and visits us, though. This is our third house we've lived in downtown, and we actually have plans on building our fourth house downtown. We love building and moving, but this will be our fourth house downtown that we've lived in. We love downtown. We've been builders for our whole lives, the last close to 30 years now. We've moved around and built houses a lot, all either in Jacksonville or right outside of Jacksonville, and we've lived in some very nice subdivisions. But we always say to ourselves, we've actually loved living downtown the best out of all the places we live. We love riding our bikes on the park, running around the park, going on the water. So, we love downtown, and we've enjoyed being downtown.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Ms. Haley? Do you swear the evidence you're about to give us, the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, self-help guy?
I do.
Thank you.
Well, first and foremost, I want to thank everybody for their time this evening and for your attention to this matter. Me and my husband are committed to bringing a gathering area to the downtown area, something we think Jacksonville could really use. As an active-duty family ourselves, we know how important connection and community is, and we would really just like to focus on that and to bring another option to the area. If you guys have any questions about it, I'd be happy to answer anything.
Any questions of Ms. Leo?
Just, are you planning at some point to do some craft brewing or...
We do hope so. Within the next three to five years, we hope to expand to brewing our own.
Okay. That's a good touch.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Get back to my place here. All right, counsel, you're being asked to, I'm going to close the public hearing. Anybody else wish to speak on this matter before I close the public hearing? Close the podium.
We have someone back.
Oh, I have a hand. Yes, sir. Come on up. If you would, please give us your name and address.
Good evening, Mr. Town. I'm Dave Wonder. I own...
Okay, first, I need to swear you. Do you swear the evidence you're about to give us, the truth, the whole truth and nothing but truth, self-help guy?
I do, sir.
Thank you, sir.
My name is David Wonder. I own two properties on Central Avenue, five on Mill, excuse me, two properties on West Rarole Street, five on Mill, and the Old Methodist Church. I am totally in support of this. Getting something downtown is fantastic, and Mr. Aragona and his wife have done so much for downtown, so I just want to say the community's behind him.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wonder. All right. Anyone else wish to speak to this matter? Now, at this time, I oppose the public hearing, convene the regular council meeting. Counsel, you're being asked to consider proposed requests for the site plan, Type 3 site plan and special use permit.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we recommend, we approve the recommended adjustment. Am I getting the language of this right? I'm sorry. Hold on just a minute.
All right.
I approve, Mr. Mayor, let's just start over. I make a motion that we approve the rezoning as presented.
You want to approve the special use permit and Type 3 site plan?
Special use permit as presented, yes, with...
Based on facts.
Items, based on the facts, with items A through J being affirmative. And this is indeed a good thing for downtown and for Jacksonville. It's going to allow some development that we need to see, so it's a good thing.
Okay, I have a motion. Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed. Thank you. All right, so we're going to move right along here to number eight. And this will be a rezoning from single, residential, single-family to corridor commercial on Richlands This is, Ryan King will be presenting this item. All right, Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor. City Council, this next request, Agenda Item Eight is a legislative public hearing for a map amendment for Richlands Highway going from residential, single-family 20 to corridor commercial. This property is currently within the ETJ. It's currently wooded, as shown before you on the screen. The, Mr. Benny Thomas Pollard submitted a rezoning request. This has gone to the planning board for recommendation last week. As you'll see on the map before you, this is the back of the, it used to be Burke's, Burke's Dollar Tree, but it's changed names now, and then the Walmart on Yaup Road, and then the flea market site on Richlands Highway. So, this is, you know, off of the main highway, but owned by the same person that owns property along the highway. It's currently zoned residential, single-family 20. Their request is to amend it to corridor commercial, and the Camel Land Use Plan supports this entire area to regional commercial. So, the Long Range Plan supported rezoning to corridor commercial, and that is why staff has also recommended approval in light of the Camel Land Use Plan, as well as the development trends that have occurred over the last decade within this area. With that being said, the planning board considered this last week and recommended approval, as did staff. So, at this time, be happy to answer any questions that the city council may have about this item for rezoning, and the planning board and staff have recommended approval.
Counsel, any questions of Mr. King?
Go back to the picture, Ryan. What are those two homes over there on the left?
There are two homes, that's correct.
Is that, is that where it remains the west side, Treda Park? Is that what it was?
They appear to be site-built houses, not really sure, but not sure if that, what that used to be.
Gotcha. Just looking at one on the far left.
So, but as the property is remaining residential, single-family 20, if this property is rezoned, any development that would happen on this four acres would be subject to the buffering standards, corridor commercial next to residential, single-family 20. So, there would be a 30-foot Type A buffer that would have to be preserved along the boundary that is next to the single-family dwellings. Have those people reached out with any concerns? I have not.
Stand there, here.
I have not fielded any calls.
Any other questions of Mr. King?
One other thing, Lori Morris with Tidewater and Associates is here on behalf of the applicant, as well as staff, ready to answer any questions that you may have.
I'll give her the opportunity to speak at public hearing. So, thank you, thank you. At this time, I'll recess the regular council meeting and open up the public hearing on this legislative Agenda Item, and I'll ask anyone who wishes to speak to this matter, please. If you would state your name and address for the clerk.
Mary Woods, 839 Gun Branch Road.
Okay, thank you.
Do I have to swear in? Oh, okay. There is two houses in that area. My mother, 91 years old, have lived there all her life, and there's another house that someone lives in, and my question is this, when you rezone, does that mean that she has to pay county taxes and city taxes? And also, she has well water, so does that mean that she's going to be responsible for having to tap into the city's water?
That issue wouldn't affect her, would it?
Ask her the questions she's going to have. She's just in the county. The county tax and her well water would not be changed by this rezoning?
So, she wouldn't have to pay city taxes?
No, ma'am.
And what's the whole purpose of the rezoning? Because you guys are getting ready to, in a couple of years, I was told that she's going to have to move anyway, because you guys are putting a bypass through there. So, what's the purpose of rezoning if you're going to put a bypass through there?
It's my understanding that that will not impact that property, if I'm, if I'm correct. I think, I saw Anthony Prins here earlier. Anthony, Anthony can address that a little more directly. He's our transportation planner.
Evening, Mayor, Counsel. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. We do have a project planned for this area, and of course, those of you on the TAC, we've spent a lot of time on this over the years. It's scheduled for 2028, so it is quite a ways out, but I don't believe that the bypass is going to impact the properties that are planned to be rezoned, but certainly the ones that are closer to the big intersection will be, will be impacted.
My mom's house is right next to the intersection.
Yes, that, that's the one, right now, the, the plan that's shown on the MPO site shows that, that left house as actually...
It's going to go right through it.
Being part of the overlay or the footprint of the interchange.
And of course, they have a full right-of-way acquisition process where you go through, you know, the appraisals, and there's relocation and all of that associated, and they're very, they're usually very fair with what they offer for relocation.
So, you're saying that she really won't have to move until 2028? Because that house is her life.
Yeah, that, well, the project isn't even scheduled to go to right-of-way until 2028, so they won't even come talk to her about acquiring the property until then.
Okay. Thank you so much for your time.
Does that help you out?
Yes, thank you so much for your time.
If you do have any other questions, you can also get up with Mr. Prins, and I'm sure he could show you, indicate to you on a map somewhere.
I can give you my contact information.
Thank you so much.
Nowhere to find me.
I was blessed this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anthony. Anyone else wish to speak to this matter? Yes, ma'am. If you would come to this podium over here, the far one, and please give your name and address to the clerk.
My name's Lori Morris. I'm with Tidewater and Associates, 306 Newbridge Street. I just wanted to emphasize that what Anthony just said about the DOT changes in that area, it will not affect the property that is currently being rezoned, only the property that is in the remaining undeveloped R20, RSF 20. But once that goes through, it's really going to be not much land to do anything of an RSF 20 development in that area. It's going to be taking up a lot of that property, but it will not affect the rezoning property.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing, and as founder of council, you're being asked to approve the rezoning request, and...
I make a motion, Mr. Mayor, that we approve the rezoning request based on findings of facts A through J being found in the affirmative, and that the rezoning advances the public interest.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, as she carries. And that brings us down to non-consent item, this is item number nine. This is sanitation fee schedule amendment, and... fee schedule amendment, and while it is going to, Wally Hanson is going to explain to us exactly what the change is there.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. As you recall, we had several discussions regarding the sanitation fee schedule and funding for sanitation as we moved into the FY24 budget. As part of that, council considered three options. Those options were to look at making sanitation fully supported and adjusting fees in, in order to meet that. Secondly, we looked at kind of continuing where we were with general fund transfers. And then third, we looked at a phased approach. Council did select to move forward with a phased approach. Staff proposed some fee schedule amendments. And primarily, those were a $4 increase for residential and small commercial, small business, and an 80 cent per tip on the tipping fee for commercial dumpster collection. We did not propose any changes in the disposal. Disposal is calculated based on the landfill fees of $57 per ton. We did change the minor ancillary fees, like the dial-a-trailer program and a few set-aside programs that we have. But the big change was really to the small business pickup and residential pickup of $4. With that, we did not propose any changes to the dumpster rental fees that we charge businesses. And the reason for that is in FY22, that was the only fees we increased, and we did that because our dumpster cost doubled. The steel cost to make dumpsters went up significantly, and we had to modify our fee to cover our dumpster cost. So in FY22, we went from $20 for a two cubic yard down to $35 for an eight cubic yard. And in FY23, you can see we increased those because of that dumpster cost. Unfortunately, when we pulled together the fee schedule, we went back to the FY22 fees. So we inadvertently, I think, pulled the wrong base fee schedule. And that is something that we need to correct. We haven't sent out any bills. That fee schedule's been in effect for about two weeks now. And it was called as we were preparing the fee schedule to upload it. So our request would be to adjust the FY24 adopted fee schedule to match that which was originally approved with FY23. So the proposal before you tonight is a fee schedule amendment showing the FY24 fees that mirrored to the FY23. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, any questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, and I apologize for the error.
Counsel, you're being asked to approve the amendment to the fee schedule for the 2020, to maintain the 2023 revenues for individual dumpster rentals.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Next, we have item number 10, and this is going to be a discussion item, and I believe we're going to move over to A and B. Is that correct? So we'll take a quick break, move over to meeting room A and B for item 10 to discuss economic development goals, policies, and procedures. All right, next, we have item number 10. This is the discussion item on economic development goals, policies, and procedures. And Anthony will be presenting this item.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for the opportunity to present on this item. As you recall, we've been working on various economic development initiatives for about the past year and a half, at least proactively working on economic development. And as we come towards the conclusion of Project Frontier and hopefully embark on new adventures moving forward, I want to talk to you about possibly establishing some goals, policies, and procedures to help formalize the process. The important thing here is, is that we have consistency, you know, and we also have guidance as a staff as to what we're trying to accomplish in the pursuit of economic development. And again, hopefully, we can accomplish that with either these goals or others that the council may choose to, to consider and approve. Question of why? I think the number one reason is, and this is why most communities have policies regarding economic development, is essentially to tell the public that we're open for business. We want people to come here and be successful and do great things. And by having a policy, the council would be saying that out loud. And as I mentioned before, it provides guidance to us on what we should be pursuing and how process for considering certain projects as they come along, because they're all going to be very unique, and they all have been thus far as well. Creation of an incentive toolbox. Now, this isn't something that obligates you to do anything with incentives, but it does create the opportunity, if you choose in the future, to offer incentives for a business that meets whatever criteria we feel is most appropriate. And then last, certainly not least, is to activate economic growth. We know what the rules regarding annexation are these days. We know that there is an uneven playing field out there with other communities and economic development. So we want to hopefully use this as a, as a means to activate economic activity within our community. Some of the components here, of course, mentioned goals, policy statement, procedures. So if we're, if we're pursuing our goals, and it's, these are activated by our policy statement, and then we have procedures that allow us to consider certain opportunities as they come before us, hopefully, what we end up in the end is with an agreement or a series of agreements with developers who want to come here and open businesses. And, and the reason that we may end up with multiple agreements is because every opportunity is going to be different. They're going to be in different locations, there're going to be different people, and they're certainly going to have different terms. That picture there, I, I should note, is, is Project Frontier. And the Stormwater Pond may look very small on the screen, but I'll tell you, it's nine feet deep, and it's, it's huge. So the project is moving along great. So if you have an opportunity to go out there and take a look, please do. So when we look at goals, you know, these are the overarching things that we feel we want to accomplish within, within the guise of economic development. And of course, these are just recommendations that we're putting out there, but as we move towards approval of something, we definitely want council to own these and change them as you see fit, remove some, add some, whatever makes the most sense. But these are going to be the things that we're looking for when we pursue economic development initiatives. And hopefully, we can agree that all of these make a lot of sense. So strengthen in the tax base, promote economic diversity, increase the standard of living. I feel like those are all very positive things that we could probably get behind. Same thing with retain and support the expansion of local businesses, so keep what we have in, as well as pursue new, provide an adequate supply of shovel-ready land for economic growth. That's exactly what we're doing with Frontier. We've had Frontier for a number of years, and it's just been sitting there growing trees for the most part. Now that we were able to source some funds from the, the Golden Leaf Foundation and others, and we're out there making improvements to the infrastructure, there's a lot of interest. And I think by the time we get that project complete, it's not going to be difficult for us to sell that property for very sound economic growth. So also want to build, maintain, build and maintain a skilled and flexible workforce, goes without saying. We have lots of people here that have skills and knowledge. We have people moving here every day. We have folks who are transitioning from the Marine Corps that want to stay here. In fact, I was just with a gentleman the other, the other day, and, and he said that he loved Jackson Hills so much, after he left the Navy, within the next six months, he was going to stay here, even though he hadn't found a job yet. So, you know, creating economic activity is a means to get those folks to stay here, right, by creating good, solid jobs for them to want to stay for. Promote local entrepreneurship to increase the number of small businesses. Small businesses drive the economy. You know, here, of course, the biggest economic impact is, is the base, right? But in most everywhere else in the world, local, small businesses are the ones that either determine your level of success or not so much. And we feel that this, by, by supporting small business development and increasing that activity, that's a way for us to make a more well-rounded economy for Jackson Hill in total. And then strengthen our position as a tourist destination. This is where the mission of the Tourism Development Authority and the city council intersect, and we're partnering on the 400 acres right now at the master plan. I fully expect more of that to occur in the future. And it's just a great thing for us to consider as, as we move forward as a community. So any questions or concerns about the goals? Do these all seem pretty reasonable?
What are we building? Are you shell buildings and just selling that way, or just strictly just the land?
Well, that's certainly an option, and, and we have that option with Project Frontier. You know, there, there are certain things that you have to work through to make sure everything is above board from a legal perspective and that the timing is right. But we, we will be bringing something forward to council at some point in the near future to talk about a shell building.
Because it'd be nice to have like a little business park, I mean, for like local businesses, for like contractors, because a lot of like places like Wilmington, they have a lot of those areas. And it's hard for like subs, right, contract, like framers or landscaping companies to find somewhere that's somewhat affordable where they could use for their businesses and not be on western and places like that where they can't, or just doing out their house. It'd be nice, a lot of them would like to have a storefront of some sort, and that would be a perfect area for that, where it's not on like, say, you know, western and kind of off the path a little bit.
Well, and, and one of the main challenges that we hear about all the time is affordability.
Yeah.
You know, and that's, you look at bullet number two there, that's something that we're going to have to address if we really want to promote entrepreneurship in our community. At some point in the near future, we'll talk about a potential partnership that we have with an organization in Wilmington that may be able to help us with that. But of course, shell buildings, especially, you know, on property that the city owns or that we have control over, we can help to regulate, you know, the terms of the sale or the lease or whatever, to make them more affordable for folks that have startup businesses or just small businesses they want to grow.
There's some similar account in the county, but there's nothing really, to my knowledge, that's, you know, like that in the city, where it would be convenient to a lot of, you know, Lowe's and different hardware stores. There's one right down the street from Frontier. So it'd be nice to see that happen.
Well, and again, this is where we get back to annexation, the challenge that we have with that, you know. If you see these things start to occur on the perimeter of the city, you know, the extension of water and sewer and things like that, used to create incentive for folks to annex in the city. That may not necessarily be required in the future. So what we're trying to focus on is creating opportunities for those things to occur on property that's already within the city, the city limits proper. So, but yes, you're exactly right.
Anthony, could you go back to that, that view of the business park?
Yes, sir. Would you like me to orient you as to where we are?
Yes, please.
So bottom right-hand corner, that is the parking lot for Millermont. And you can see the white kind of spot on the top left-hand corner, that's the water tank at the water plant. And the road, as it bends back towards that line of trees right there, on the other side of that line of trees, that's the YMCA property.
So as we develop in that part there, the connection to Gun Branch would become very important.
Yes, sir.
Tell us where we're at as far as.
Well, we, we received grant from, funds from
Commerce.
Department of Commerce, that's where we got the money from, to extend the road. And that's going to happen, hopefully, within the next 30 to 60 days.
I've seen surveyors out there. I didn't know if they was for the city or for the Y for their stuff going on.
Well, probably a little bit of both, actually. But everything that's going on, on our side of the tree line is for Project Frontier.
But it was on the Gun, it was closer to Gun Branch. I didn't, I got something to do with that road and everything.
Probably to cut out the land for the, the aquatic center.
Our, our road extension just basically jumps the, the gap there where the tree line is. So that's the only work we're really doing, right, connecting.
Yes, that's the only work that we're doing, and we're doing it in an existing easement. So it's only 200 feet of road construction, but that will be done as part of the overall project that you see on the screen.
The area there above the Stormwater Pond, what is, what is the right, right now?
On the right?
On the tree there, in the very center.
No, that's, 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 those are developable lots.
Yes. So essentially, that's the area that they were basically taking the dirt that came out of the pond and driving it to other areas of the site to, to kind of distribute it and level it out.
Is that, is the mill fed, somebody was going to try to put a flex space in there, right?
That's the opportunity that I mentioned before.
Is it still?
We did receive a proposal, and we're in the process of reviewing that, and hopefully we'll come back and talk to you soon.
How many total acres are there?
I think it's 26, something like that.
Twenty both sides of the road.
Mm-hmm. But that's also without mitigating any of the wetlands. So one of the things that we're considering is whether or not we mitigate some wetlands and open up some additional developable property.
In the area to the right, right center where the trees, we have all the trees. Now, that's, is that the property that belonged to the hospital?
On the wetlands, he's talking about.
So on the left-hand side, where you see the, the
Okay, that's over that one.
That's where the hospital.
Right. So where you see the, the power line easement there, that's the Jones-on-Schlager easement. On the other side of that is about 20 some odd acres that used to belong to the hospital. It does not belong to the hospital. But Frontier is going well, as long as it quits raining, we should be able to finish that project up soon. Every time it rains, it turns into a mud hole, so.
At least it fills your hole up faster.
Well, the pond's full, I can tell you that. They were de-watering it the other day because they haven't, they haven't created the outfall, but.
And that'll service that whole area, correct?
Yes, sir. So the design that we did with Tidewater allows for up to 80% impervious surface over the entire site. That's a lot of.
How many acres out there right now?
I'm sorry?
How many acres is, is this is park?
So in total, it was 42, six, something like that? But now with what we've got left, it's a little bit less than that, and then there's a pretty significant portion where the trees still remain on that picture that are impacted by wetlands. Now, some of those are isolated wetlands that we could probably mitigate and get some usable property back, but we haven't done the cost benefit on that. Any other questions?
I'm glad to see the emphasis we're putting on economic development. It's a great thing. Just a question. And I was actually at one time on, on a committee for National League of Cities for Community Economic Development. And that's one thing I, I mentioned before about, we, we went to neighborhood improvement, but in other cities, we have community development, which economic development will follow under that. So where are we in terms of creating a, a community development, you know, a department? Again, who's going to actually put these goals in action? I'm, I'm kind of confused. And we talked about economic mobility at one time, where we don't even have that conversation anymore. So I'm trying to figure out, you know, like I said, I think Tracy actually at one time went at Reggie, was it Reginald Woodson?
Reggie Goodson.
Reggie Goodson, yeah, was back there, because
He was head of development services.
Right.
But we never did economic development in that part of the city. What, what we always have done is worked with Jo Ed, and we consider them our economic development outreach. And now what's happening is the city is now more involved along with Jo Ed.
So are we going to have a community development, economic development, are we part of community development? We're going to state neighborhood improvement, because I, I always think about this whole thing about Martha Stewart would be good at neighborhood improvement, but Tracy's good at community development, because that's what she did. She, she does a lot of that, you know, in that capacity. But I'm wondering about far as the workload and where we're going forward with trying to get these goals in place.
The way you look at it now, part of it, and one of the things that we'll have in our post-budget retreat, is we're going to talk about how economic development includes housing, as well as these economic incentives and these plans. This plan here, the economic development falls under This plan here, the economic development falls under Anthony's purview. Um, the Neighborhood Improvement Services falls under Ms. Jackson's purview, then the Plan Inspections falls under Mr. King's purview. So what we've done is theoretically, you would see community development encompass all of those things, but when we've separated those functions out independently, then individuals take a branch of that. Part of our post-budget retreat is to talk about how those functions are gonna work moving forward, uh, so that we maximize the interaction and the utility. You know, we don't want to separate functionality within the departments, but the way we operate now, we don't operate under that one umbrella. So each one is, I would say, compartmentalized as a branch and a function of what you would see typically in a community development, but that still doesn't always encompass all of the economic development side. So what we're seeing with this item tonight is us creating the council direction and maintaining that partnership with Joed so that we're moving forward in that direction. We're gonna do some things on our side as well, um, that will help us be aggressive in economic development. And then as we lay out that plan and that strategy that we want council to to consider, you'll see part of that focus, not only housing and retail and small business development, but you'll see downtown be one of those branches too, so. Um, not looking at bringing those together at this point, but that's part of our.
I just have some concern, Will, as we go forward.
I've got a good session lined up for that August third meeting, so I think that's gonna be a big dialogue point for us. Good point.
Well, and the other point there is that economic development means a lot. You know, and this is just a portion of it. The the goals, objectives, and the policy and the procedures, this is just what we're recommending to start, and we will evolve over time. There's no two ways about it, as we learn more and as we do more. Okay, so the the policy is basically the piece of this document that activates the goals and objectives. So it restates a lot of things, but basically, the most important thing is the bottom bullet there. It basically says, we feel all the, all these goals and objectives are important, we want to level the playing field, and so Mr. City Manager, we want you to go out and develop a set of procedures that helps us to achieve these goals and objectives. And and this is just standard for the way that the city operates. The council approves the policy and the goals, and then the city manager is directed to develop and implement a policy. Procedures, yes. And the good thing about that too is because we know that we're gonna have to evolve over time, by having the city manager implement those procedures, um, it does give us some flexibility, which is a good thing. So again, develop, maintain, and execute by the city manager establishes consistent and equitable processes. Again, I mentioned before that it's gonna be very important that as these come, uh, as these come before us and as we recruit them, we need to be consistent in the way that we evaluate them. That was the main advice that I got from John on this, right?
Yes.
Consistency, so establishes minimum criteria and exclusions, so this isn't going to be available to anybody and everyone. And it may not be available to anyone everywhere. So there may be very specific locations within the city that we want to concentrate these incentives. I'm not sure if we want to incentivize development on Western Boulevard, right? But in the downtown area, maybe in the Ellis Boulevard area, other places where we want to see new development and redevelopment, then they may apply. Uh, create incentive options, and as I mentioned before, it doesn't really obligate us to anything, it just creates tools. And then all of this was done with a focus on statutory compliance. When I reviewed other policies and procedures from communities throughout the state, it was really amazing to me to see how many didn't meet current statute. So again, under John's, uh, under John's, uh, supervision here, went through and made sure that everything was was compliant with current general statute. And the main thing that I saw more than anything with other communities is that consistent and equitable process. You have to follow the rules, you have to have a consistent process. So just gonna leave you with some key points here, and as Mr. Ray mentioned, we're gonna continue the conversation on August third. This would not obligate the council to do anything, it creates a tool for us to potentially use in the future. However, what it does is it does create a public statement that the city is interested in economic development. So that us as staff and Joed as kind of our economic development representative can wave these things around, they're talking to businesses and say, the city is serious about this. It allows us to proactively grow the city by preparing land, by, you know, creating incentives for people to want to come and be here in the first place. And ultimately, all of this, we hope, is going to help to improve the quality of life for our community. So that's the conclusion of my presentation, Mayor, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those at this time.
Do you have any questions? You're asking us to provide you with some direction here as far as.
Any any feedback, is good feedback?
I think that you're gonna come back with us on on August, uh, August third, you say?
At some point in the in the near future, hopefully, we would like to see council adopt something like this. But but in the meantime, if you have any feedback, please share that, and we can certainly make adjustments as needed.
At the at the retreat, that's where we want to talk about this spectrum, that includes all of the economic development on the third, Mayor, and then at the council meetings is when we would bring back the documents for consideration for council.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So that brings us to the report section here of our meeting, and I'll start with Councilmember Hillworth.
No report, sir.
Ford.
Mayor Park.
Mayor Park, happy to be here.
Jackson.
I hate to slow everything down, but I I attended a couple of different events. First of all, the Colonel Gonzalez invited us out for the Fourth of July celebration, I think. The last time I was out there, I was on, I was small enough to be sat on the top of a vehicle, so that was, that was exciting. And to be up, be up that close, but we have, we had a good time, even enjoyed the country music.
What an incredible turnout, we don't have a picture of that, but that was an an awesome event.
It was a good event, it was great, it was great, well-attended, and the rain, it rained outside from, a guy told me, from when he left, um, Richlands to the front gate, and it never rained, you know, on the base, so. It turned out great. Also, um, Ola had a summer Latin festival, and everybody had a good time. They said they had had some in the past, I kept on saying it's first annual, but they said that's the largest, I think they had a crowd of about seventy-five hundred people. Uh, tourism, great economic impact. I think it was Second Marine Division Band, uh, unders, uh, weren't also free, uh, Pellet, I think is his name. And they came, they had a, they had a great time, because I'd never seen a marine band actually, you know, go out in the club, in the crowd and dance and play, and it was, it was just a wonderful event. And then last night, we had the opioid town hall meeting, so, you know, and the big takeaway from that is I, you know, I tell people, as long as we start working together as a community, because this is affecting everybody now, I mean, they got so, we have been dealing with opioids and heroin, but there's so many other things coming online. And it's really scary, it's really scary about where we're going, so we're gonna have to work on this as a community, uh, as we go forward, because it's affecting everybody. That's all.
Uh, all I'm gonna say is the baseball went really well last month, didn't it? And thoroughly enjoyed it, and I was just, uh, just happy to see the the interest that was demonstrated there by the attendance. I understand that we outshone the Morehead City Marlins on their attendance on several occasions there.
Mayor, we're blowing out just everybody, we, Kinston's minor league baseball team, we have more attendance here than for that game as well.
We have somewhere in the neighborhood of about twelve hundred and fifty.
Something around there, yeah.
And this, and that was, uh, two teams that aren't based in in Jacksonville. We'll have our team online next year, two thousand twenty-four season, and the Ospreys, of course, and, uh, we're looking forward to that, and, uh, the field, uh, I have to give kudos to our recreation and parks. Sure, we're able to put on a great show, they did did great work on the field. Uh, that's the same field I played Premier League baseball on half a century.
It was more dirt and less grass.
I took many, I took many, uh, bad hop through base to the face, uh, on that play infield, which now is grass infield, which I, you know, wish.
That's the one you never want to play.
It was really some good baseball, I was, I I really enjoyed, really, my wife and I both went out, we both enjoyed, I know Mr. Jackson was there, I know, uh, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Edwards, I know Bob was there, uh, and and everybody seemed to have a great time except for, uh, there weren't enough food trucks, I understand, to supply the need for food, so, you know, maybe that goes into their after-action report next time.
You know, Mayor, they lined up four, plus the Kona Ice, and two canceled based on the weather, but the other two held strong. And we heard today in an after-action report that the snack bar that they had, that the owners had, uh, did incredibly well, and that was candy, drinks, and snacks. So you just look at that, and that's, it's unbelievable, strong, strong evidence.
And that field was immaculate.
Oh, yeah.
Especially on the right wing alley, it helps, right?
And I understand they worked about two days in a row to get it in that good a shape, so, anyway, that's my report.
Taking all my material, Mayor, the more you talk, I've got nothing for our one city. Mr. Jackson already took the first half, so, uh, I would like to talk about the town hall. Chief Yonero left a little while earlier, but Chief Yonero hosted the town hall to discuss the opioid crisis, as we've been dealing with this for a number of years now. And and Chief has the stats for, uh, the number of lives that this has taken in our community, um, it's 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 horrible. So having a proactive meeting that that the chief scheduled, um, at the public safety facility is incredible. We had about thirty-five participants there to show up, Mr. Jackson was there, I do have pictures to prove that Mr. Jackson was there. But we did record this for G ten, because we want to get the information out to the community. You can see one of our counselors, uh, at the meeting as as a panel member, uh, but looking at the turnout and seeing the community active. The goal that we had was to engage the partners, and then you you'll see that in all of our projects. Uh, United Way, Onslow Community Outreach, um, Cape Side Psychiatry, Zero Hour Life Center, NICS Crisis, um, um, District Attorney, obviously there, so it's great to see the community responding to have this dialogue. We're gonna keep this dialogue active throughout, I think it's our existence. I think it's a, it's something that's not gonna go away, just like we've seen issues throughout our communities over the last hundred years. Uh, these are things that we're gonna be active, and as our community chooses, we're gonna be proactive, Mayor. Um, the the response, the feedback, and the community, uh, activity here was very good. It shows what we're doing in terms of the leadership, and I say that back to Chief Yonero. A strong showing for him and his team to pull together community members. You're gonna see more town hall meetings that have value like this, Mayor, moving forward. And as the mayor pointed out, we did have our, uh, I think the mayor grabbed the microphone and said, welcoming baseball back to Jacksonville. Uh, the parks team was incredible, the recreation team was fantastic, the turnout, we had over twelve hundred people. Uh, this was definitely a community activity, and, uh, from all signs, we believe that without the threat of rain, we would have maybe even doubled the turnout. Uh, no full, no full stands, uh, yet, as council and TDA have worked together to say, hey, let's do something to make this better by next year. Uh, the field from this angle is incredible, the restrooms were were just spot on, Jack Amiette presented very well. Uh, the mayor threw a heck of a first pitch.
It was a strike.
They 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 would fall out in T-ball, wouldn't they?
Right. We didn't have pitch call on to see what the strike zone was, but from this angle, it looks like a solid strike. Um, Ms. Edwards was there to see from that angle, so I think she called it a strike. The county folks hanging out with us there on the mound.
I could tell you where that pitch would have ended up if there would have been somebody hitting it. Over that left centerfield fence.
But I'll tell you, Mayor, just the overall impact of seeing the Kinston team and the Brunswick team here in the, in Jacksonville playing baseball. The catcher for one of the teams is one of Jacksonville High School's very own. Uh, overall, I think we turned out, it was eight to two, I believe was the final score, and most everybody was able to stay through the end. Uh, we planned today our after-action so that we know come next year, next season, that we're gonna have, um, we're gonna have a different presentation even, so what we have now was very impressive. That's the grounds crew, they did a. Really only the lady on the left, the other two gentlemen were just there. But when you.
They were supervised.
They were supervised. An excellent group of people to make this happen, the mayor sent out an email to the to the team that that got everything working. Uh, there's the mayor, Ms. Phillips, uh, taking in the, uh, priority seating. Uh, but you'll see, there's some things that we're gonna do for next year that's gonna make the experience that much better. As we mentioned, the food trucks, the lines stayed consistent throughout nine innings. That means people were there trying to get food, and when they have the opportunity next year, the Patinos are gonna rotate uh, new vendors, because we want those vendors there, that's what we're inviting, uh, inviting the community to come out and try some of our food trucks. Um, the the fire department was there, the best seats in the house, right, and they were able to to allow for for pictures and to come up in the ladder truck, uh, fully secured and safety first. There's the crew, the mayor pointed out, that really made it happen. Working all day on Sunday, working all day on Monday, and protecting that field to make sure it could work. Uh, this is not something we do, we're not a game day crew, so, uh, Mike Mumford, just because that smile's there, deserves some attention. But they led this team to make sure baseball would work, even without the rain on Monday, the field was not playable, right? Even if it it didn't rain on Monday, Mumford and that that crew, they were out there and they did one heck of a job. Uh, under my leadership, of course, with my expertise in field maintenance. But I I just tell you, these guys were spot on to make it happen. The community atmosphere is what you're seeing here, we know it's gonna be successful next year. And then for the region, this is what's beautiful, for the region, we're gonna have a lot of baseball activity next summer, going from from Goldsboro to Kinston to Wilmington to Morehead City, and we're gonna welcome that because it's an awesome opportunity for for our community to be a part of the larger community, which is baseball in eastern North Carolina, so you're spot on, Mayor. Thanks for, uh, for being there and and giving it a good go ahead, uh, we look forward to next season.
Carter? Mayor Ford, thank you. I'd be entertained a much to the journey.
Some.
Second.
All this paper, so.